All right, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of the flag, please. Another big crowd here in Elton tonight. Thank you for coming. Our air conditioning is not working this evening, so it may get a little warm in here tonight. But once again, thanks for everyone for coming. Okay, the minutes are September 17th, 2014. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
(Inaudible).
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the minutes?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report. We can receive the financial report on our desk here this evening. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report and payment of the bills?
(Inaudible).
We have a--
I have a question.
We've got to take a second first.
Sorry, go ahead. Second?
Second. Discussion, I have one quick question.
And then I'll-- Go ahead.
Steve, we had-- we supported the Elton Little League golf outing last week at Patriots Glen Golf Course. Did we take that money out of the community donations?
Yes, we did. And that's in the report tonight. Just want to check if it's been signed tonight.
Very good. DJ?
Oops, sorry. Good evening, everybody. Christopher and all the repair for total-- for that money there. Why are we using that? Why are we using them?
Why are we using them? That's a Public Works question.
So, or for the business?
Vehicle or vehicles repaired or equipment repaired there. I could pull out the invoice, say nothing, question and be what the description is on.
Two air conditioners and a wood pump.
(Inaudible).
Are we shopping that around?
Oh, yeah. That's why we're there.
They're the cheapest around?
We use them before.
They're the cheapest around?
Moving them to local vendors.
And I'm assuming with Mike's Diesel Service also. Have we talked to Delaware Diesel?
We use Mike's Diesel quite frequently, truck repairs.
I guess my question was, if we're buying local, my question is, are we making sure that we're getting all of the local people involved?
I don't have a list of vendors.
I think--
(Inaudible).
Yeah, I think-- I think we've got to make sure that we can get a Public Works director here, but I think that that-- I think those decisions have been made by-- what's the Public Works repair guy down there? What's his name?
Steve.
Steve? I think that he's been the one that's been going from place to place.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I'd like to invite Mr.-- well, maybe we don't need your-- do we need George Patchell to come up, Louis?
Yes, he should come up and represent the YMCA for the--
George Patchell, I'd like to invite you up. The YMCA of Cecil County is going to petition for annexation into the town of Elton, and I think you have a letter stating that.
Yes, sir. Hello, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
How's it doing?
Mr. George. On behalf of the YMCA of Cecil County, I would like to present to the Mayor and the Commissioners a petition for annexation into the town of Elton. The YMCA of Cecil County is a nonprofit organization. As a sole owner of that property, has parcel 100 on tax map 309 at grid J8 consisting of 34.366 acres, more or less having a street address of 25 YMCA Boulevard, and particularly described and indeed recorded among the land records of Cecil County at Libra NDS number 174, Folio 050, hereby petition to annex said property into the town of Elton, an incorporated municipality of the state of Maryland. There are no persons residing on this said parcel. This property is presently zoned BI, business intensive, under the county zoning ordinance. The property is currently served by on-site septic and Town of Elton Water. It is anticipated upon the annexation that the property will be serviced by town services, including public sewer. I would like to thank the Mayor and Commissioners for consideration for the annexation of the Y into the town of Elton.
Very good. Louis, we need to accept the petition, and then what happens?
At the board, so is in favor of accepting, and I would vote to accept the petition for annexation. At the next meeting, we'll introduce a resolution, the annexation resolution.
Is there a public meeting on that at all?
Yes, oh, yeah, required. We have to advertise for weeks, for consecutive weeks, and have a public hearing.
Do we have a motion to accept the petition for the YMCA to be part of the town of Elton?
(Inaudible).
We have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
George, looking forward to having you in the town of Elton.
Thank you.
In that town of Elton rate.
That's right. For water and sewer, right?
Both ways.
Both ways, sewer.
Okay, I'd like to invite up Dawn for the Neighborhood Youth Program Panel update.
Hello.
Hello.
We're just glad you're having us. Mrs. Woods, please stand. We're here for the Neighborhood Youth Panel. We just came out tonight to give you an update on the program.
Could you pull that microphone over to you, please, ma'am? Thank you.
Earl keeps me in line with that microphone. Right, great. I was just hoping the visual would get a little better in the house, so that's great. Just wanted to give you an update, and I had a short PowerPoint for the new Mayor and Commissioner, and just for anyone out in the audience who may not be familiar with the program, just to give you a little background. We've had the Neighborhood Youth Panel since 2000, and here in Elton since 2008. And Mrs. Woods was hired in 2008 to run the program here in Elton. She works along with Chief Donnelly, and we work with youth in the community. It's a first-time offender program for juveniles, and we engage a lot of people from the community as volunteers. They work with the youth, and it's a good opportunity for young people to avoid having formal charges on their record. So, we'll start the PowerPoint. Basically, like I said, it's a for-first-time-juvenile offenders. It's throughout the county. I did an update on this, but I forgot to include the Bohemian Manor area. So, it is throughout the entire county now. That is a recent addition this year. So, it's a way for them to avoid the juvenile justice system, and it's also a way for the community to take an active role. Like I said, we received a grant in 2000 from DJS, and since then, we've gotten some other grants from the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention. This year, we received a video lottery terminal grant, a community grant, from the casino in Perryville, and we used that to supplement the program. And like I said, we were able to add the Bo Manor District this year. So, we're receiving several grants from several different sources, and donations from a couple different sources to keep the program running throughout the county. And basically, this is just an overview of the juvenile justice system, and trying to take in accountability of the youth, public safety, and character development. This is just also a review of the normal process through the juvenile justice system. And on the right-hand side, the colored blocks represent court appearances. If a youth is taken into the Neighborhood Youth Panel, which is considered a diversion program, they avoid this whole process. They avoid the DJS intake, that whole process. And when somebody avoids court action, they're avoiding four to five visits to court. So, we're taking, you know, all this away from the courts and hopefully making it a quicker and more effective way to handle it. Like I said, we have several panelists that volunteer with the youth panel. We get volunteers from each community that we serve. We have in Elton, Rising Sun, Northeast, Port Deposit, and now Bohemian Manor area, which is actually currently part of the Elton group. It's still developing. So, yes, we are always looking for volunteers if anybody is interested. It has to be 21, member of the community, want to work with young people, and there is a confidentiality and background check required. And the youth need to be juveniles under 18, and they need to be 100% cooperative. It's voluntary that they participate in the program, but those parents do want their child to have the opportunity. So, we're not court-- we don't hear cases to determine whether they're guilty or not. They have to be admitting that they're-- you know, they've done something wrong, and they want to make up for it, and then we work with them from there. Basically, what happens is the coordinator, myself, or Mrs. Woods, will screen the candidate for appropriateness, make sure that they understand that they need to admit their involvement. And we schedule a hearing, and usually the Elton hearings are in the evening here at Town Hall, usually right in this room. We'll listen to the facts of the case. We do involve the victim. They're not generally invited to the hearing itself, but we do take all that into consideration when we develop a plan for them in writing. We give them some things to do and a certain amount of time to do it, and they'll sign that and agree to complete everything in the time given. And generally, as needed, we'll assign a mentor from the panel to work with them, if that's, you know, felt to be needed. So, one of the volunteers will work with them throughout the whole process, make sure they're dealing what they're supposed to, and just be a resource and a role model for that child. We do have several sanctions, which are part of the action plan that I mentioned, that we do with the youth. We assign research projects. We have a program called Victim Awareness, where they get a class where they get to identify with, you know, what it feels like to be a victim, so that can be pretty valuable. We have a tour of shop trauma at the University of Maryland, the T.K. U. Write a letter of apology. We have a shoplifting abatement class available. And we do try to take into consideration the age of the child, what they did wrong, what punishment they may have received already, and what they can benefit from. Sometimes it may be unrelated to what they did, you know? If they talk about drug or alcohol use, and they got in trouble for theft, we'll try to address that as well. We have career aptitude testing available through Cecil College. Journaling, which is something that they can do with their mentor. Drug and alcohol education. Mad program, which is a drug-driving program. Life Choices class is something that we implemented within this past year. It's a day-long program for the youth, so we're really proud of that. Restitution, pay for stolen or damaged items. We take children to court a lot to observe, either juvenile court, adult court, or drug court, so that can also be very valuable. We have a tobacco class available. Agro-management, conflict management, and community service. We have several here in the Elton area and all over the county, Elton Care and Rehab, And we try to, you know, take into consideration, you know, like the Boys and Girls Club, for example, something that they can-- when they're done with the program, that they can have something that they can continue to do, where, you know, they can keep that fresh in their mind, you know, so they don't get in trouble again. That's the idea here. Just to give you an idea of some of the offenses that we handle, and these are no means all of them, we get a fair amount of thefts, minor drug offenses, alcohol assaults. Like I said, we do take into consideration the victim and their wishes. It's probably about one-third female, no, two-thirds male, 70% white. And about half of the youth are over 15, and half are under. We do get a fair amount of younger children in Elton area, for some reason, you know, 10, 12-year-olds. So, interesting demographic. Victims, and like I said, we involve them throughout the entire process.
Dawn, is this county-wide statistics you're showing?
Yeah, most of these charts are all-- they are pretty much county-wide. And throughout the county, most of the youth will complete the program satisfactorily, meaning that they do everything that they agree to in the time that they're given to do it. We do work with them with some reason if they're having difficulty. Very few children get in trouble while they're in the program. Recidivism, which is reoffense, is approximately 12%, so 88-- oh, I went down too far. About 88%. Now I gotta get a-- all right. So, I'm not very good with technology, so you'll have to forgive me. And we're very proud of that statistic. And over 14 years, and I've been administrator for the program that entire time, it's been right around 90%. The youth do not get in trouble. And I do monitor them for 18 months after they turn 18. Well, after they complete the program, and then once they turn 18, they're no longer in the juvenile system.
So, your success rate is 90% up until the age of 18?
Yeah, so the youth that complete the program, 90% do not get in trouble again.
Wow. That's complete program.
And we're very proud of that. And then again, it's county-wide. I think Elton is right around 86% for Elton. This is working down by town. That's why I wanted to get back to this, when we went through that whole thing. So, for Elton, 93% completed the program, 86% did not get in trouble after 18 months. And I don't monitor them longer than that, it's because we don't have enough staff and manpower to-- there's a lot of kids in--
With your total average of 136, I believe, I know Elton has the highest number of offenders. Is there a reason for that? It's because--
It's just because of the population and it's being the county seat, and it's not just the town of Elton, it's the entire Elton High School district. When we break the town, you know, it's the whatever high school they get to, that's kind of how we do it, just to make it easier for us to keep track of. Now, this is Department of Juvenile Services data, and they actually have seen a decrease, for some reason, in juvenile referrals from this past year, and we have also seen a reduction. But we handle about 25% of their caseload, which means those kids are staying out of the juvenile justice system, okay? And out of the courts, probably, too. So, you know, that's pretty significant. And basically, you know, like I said, we've been in the county for a while. We just wanted to kind of make everybody aware of it and what's going on. Earlier in the spring, we had a meeting with County Executive Moore, and Mr. George was there, and Mr. Rick Paul was there, talking about the funding. We have several grants that fund the program, and we did receive a grant for this year, for fiscal year '15, from GOCCP, which is what pays for the Elton program.
Okay.
And we did receive notice that the juvenile accountability grants have been reduced. They actually are using leftover funds from prior years for this year's grants. If they aren't reinstated, they say that any recipients are going to receive-- it'll be 25% each-- less each year. So, at the end of four years, there won't be any funding, and this is if they have it. So, earlier in the year, you know, we got together the town, you know, administrators and talked to them about it, basically, and everybody was very supportive, and said they would do whatever was necessary to keep it going. And we're just trying to plan ahead and be proactive, and, you know, hopefully it won't be worst-case, but it's possible there won't be any money for this next year. So, we'll have to get together again, I guess, to talk, make plans, and figure out what we're doing.
Very good.
We appreciate your support. Chief Donnelly has been great. He and his officer take an active role, okay? He's there, and, you know, plus there's a couple of his officers that are always there and work with the kids, and it's really, really great. Elton's fabulous.
Very good. Well, keep us in the loop. We appreciate the job that you're doing, and the statistics speak for themselves, and I think that this is certainly a program that we always got to be behind, because if we can make a difference at the age level that you're working with, it's going to make a difference as we move forward.
Yes, yes.
I think we all would agree to that.
Yes, and this is one more point, is last year when the Governor was here about the drug problem in Cecil County, this is one of the areas that they targeted, is youth and, you know, prevention. So, we work with a lot of that type of offense, and we're trying to do as much as we possibly can with them at this age, so that hopefully it'll be successful.
Any questions from the board?
With the offenders that you deal with from Elton, are they actually born and bred here, or do you go into the background to see if they are from elsewhere? Because certainly, you have a lot of kids--
No, not necessarily. It's based on where they live at the time when they're arrested. If somebody's arrested in Elton and they live in Delaware, we won't work with them because it's a community-based program. And even if they get in trouble in Northeast, if they live in Elton, we usually just-- it's just on a case-by-case basis. But we make it available to anybody, any youth that is a first-time offender, that is, you know, meets your criteria and are amenable to working with the program, as long as they're, you know, under 18 and all that.
Very good.
And if anyone is interested in possibly volunteering for the panel, usually we'll enplate them to come to one of the hearings, and like I said, they're here, right in this room. And Mrs. Woods is our coordinator here, and I have a couple of my cards here if anybody would like one. All right? We do need some panelists for Elton, so if you're interested in working with kids, it would be a great opportunity.
Is there a set date?
(Inaudible).
Sorry. Go ahead, Mary Jo.
How many do you have on the Elton panel, and how many would you like to have?
Well, we have two officials, and we have three people that are thinking about joining.
So, you would like to have five, or?
The more you have, the more of a pool of people you obviously have, if people have things that come up, which everybody does, you know? We only ask commitment of what you're able to do as a volunteer. So, and they don't necessarily meet every week. It's not necessarily in a certain day. It's based on availability of the Town Hall and, you know, the availability of the parents. But they're generally Monday through Thursday evenings here at Town Hall, and usually they'll have two, maybe three cases in the evening. So, but it's very interesting, and it's always something. You never know what you're going to get. It's pretty good stuff.
I think I'm ready.
And any of you all are welcome, if you want to just come check it out sometime.
If you just leave your cards there, we're going to pick them up.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Let's see, we're going to have the Wilmington Area Planning Council come up, but as you're coming up, I wanted to mention in the crowd tonight, we have councilman from Cecil County, Alan McCarthy, in our audience tonight. Alan, we really appreciate you coming in tonight.
Thank you very much for your invitation.
You were on board.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tigaseke Yam, executive director for WMACO, the Wilmington Area Planning Council. Thank you for inviting me, and actually, I think I wanted to make sure that we have this on your agenda. We are updating our long-range plan, and I have a slide presentation. Unfortunately, it's all handout, so I hope you'll be able to follow through. For those who are not familiar with WMACO, we are a federally designated MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization. We do serve Newcastle County, Delaware, and Cecil County, Maryland. As you see who WMACO is, we do have a nine-member council, and they're advised by a public and technical advisory committees, and then we also have a number of subcommittees that help the technical advisory committee. And then we have nine full-time employees. Look at your page two, which is the what-- as an MPO, the federal government-- and when I say federal government, in this case, it's Federal Highway Administration and Federal Transit Administration. You have to have four programs and plans that we have to update and continue to involve the public, and that includes the regional transportation plan, a 20-year plan updated every four years, which we'll be discussing tonight. The transportation program, which is a four-year program, and the work program, which is a one-year plan, and then congestion management system. On the work program, most of you are familiar, we do send letters in the January area where we ask municipalities, counties, for any work that you would like WMACO to perform, be it a consultant or in staff. So, that letter will be coming out in the January timeframe, and we hope that we'll be able to help you if you have any needs for transportation planning and studies. Again, on page three, how our document is tied together. Again, the regional transportation plan is where we set the goals at a regional level, and then we have the corridor studies and work program, and then the implementation is through the transportation program. We have been doing long-range plan for the last 19 years, and again, this is a regulation that we have to do it, and it has been updated about four times, and you guessed it, on page four, it is time to update, and that's why we're doing the long-range plan update. And it's March 15, 2015, is the due date. I won't get into the details, but just to give you a sense, we do have three broad goals, has objectives, actions, and then new this round is the federal government requires us that we have a performance measures. So, you've set the goals and objectives and action, but how you're going to measure it, so we'll be incorporating all that. On page five, you have the goals. The number one, our first goal is support sustainable economic development and good movement. And again, I won't go into the details, but that's pretty much, you know, to make sure that we have what it needs to have both Cecil County and Newcastle County are competitive economically. On page five, also at the bottom, you have the second goal, which is efficiently transport people. And then on page six, you have poor quality of life. One thing that we have been doing is, since we have to update the long-range plan every four years, we do not wait until it's that time to update, so we have what we call the regional progress report. So, we do that in the interim in two years, and then see where we are, whether we are achieving our goals that were set in the long-range plan. So, that's just a way to make sure that we are moving in the right direction. On page seven, you talk-- you have the regional success, which is based on the regional progress report. And as you can see, vehicle crashes dropped over the past decade, both in Cecil and Newcastle County. Cleaner engines and fuels have reduced emissions. We have automated tolling adoption has increased. And then, most importantly, when we talk to our residents, they say that their transportation needs are met, which is, again, is a positive. If you actually look on page seven, we do conduct a public opinion survey, and it shows about 76% of residents feel that their travel needs are met well or very well. But on page eight, you see regional challenges. So, for every success that we have, we have multiple challenges, including the projected population employment growth. We have more household and jobs that trigger additional vehicles and freight travel. And most importantly, what you see is the doubling of our population over the age of 65, which means that we have to rethink how we do or design our transportation, because currently it is-- and we're doing it designing mainly with younger generation in mind. So, that's a shift that needs to happen soon, actually. On page eight, you also see a regional challenge, which is 80.3% of our region identify driving alone as a means of transportation toward. And of course, the challenge here being that we do not provide alternative transportation option other than the car. Continuing on page nine, which is a huge challenge that we have, is linking land use and transportation. We also have a challenge in investing and developing-- We also have a challenge in investing and developing in existing communities, much, much easier to develop in cornfields than, you know, in existing communities for many reasons. And then we also have a huge financial shortfalls that we need to address in transportation. Continue with the regional challenges on page nine. When we ask the public where they would like development to occur, ironically, they do, 71% say that we need to invest in existing towns and growth areas. With respect to air quality, that's on page 10, both Cecil County and Newcastle County is an attainment for ozone and Newcastle actually is for a particular matter as well. The good news here is that we are able to be, to meet the conformity for the region. So, and again, the idea being here, when we have projects, we have to make sure that the air quality is not worsened by adding, you know, capacity projects. So in this case, we are good for both counties. On page 10, you look at the financial outlook. This happens to be for Newcastle County, which is not doing well, but we're going down the hill very quickly. On the other hand, the good news is if you look at on page 11, the financial forecast for Cecil County is really great, especially between 2025 and 2040. And keep in mind, this is again, being updated every four years. So if things change, we will make sure that it is updated. On page 11, I do not expect you to read all that, but it is what we call in the constraint list. So when we put together a financial analysis, we have to account which projects we will be included in the next 20 to 25 years. So what you see here on page 11 is all the projects, which is total of $2.5 billion between 2015 and 2040. And then on page 26, you have similar projects, except this time it's project that was under $50 million. More specifically to the Elton area is on page 12. So in the, the short term, you have the Elton Bus Service Circulator, which is a community bus service expansion. In the midterm, we have the commuter rail, Maryland commuter rail, Perryville to Elton, and this is to expand the commuter rail capacity. Also in the midterm, we have Maryland 213 and US 40 intersection. This is only for project development, which means it's not for design or right-of-way or construction. It's just to, to make sure that we have the right solution before we program any other funding. So that's why you have in the midterm for project development. In the long term is the I-95, which is from Susquehanna River to Delaware line widening. And again, this is a major road re-improvement that would help congestion reduction and safety improvement. What you have on page 13 in the bottom is in general, what are the projects in Cecil County? That's just for your information, but I have highlighted the projects in Elton. On page 13, one thing that the federal governments allow us to do is you do have a constraint list, which means what you reasonably can accommodate in the next 20, 25 years. But they also allow us to put what we are calling aspirations list or wish list. If we have extra funding, what we, what could we do in the next 20 to 25 years? And there are more projects in the aspiration list than obviously in the constraint list. And Maryland has the, the opportunity to raise taxes and the, as you see, as you saw in the outcome of the financial analysis, that there are quite a lot of funding available in Maryland. The opposite is true in Delaware. It's actually, there's no extra funding. They will be just maintaining the existing infrastructure for a long time until there's some kind of revenue. So on page 14 also is just a continuation of all the aspiration list, which is quite a lot. So where we are with the update on page 14 is we had in our town, a public workshop where we had 75 people attended. We're currently going to groups like Hugh and a number of others to communicate what we are planning to do in the next few months. The idea is by the January council meeting, we'll have an adapted long-range plan and then we'll be submitting for approval for Federal Highway and Federal Transit Administration. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Fortunately, that's a lot of documents. Fortunately, we're in good hands because I know we got Gene Minner attending these meetings. And Gene, Gene keeps us updated on the progress and, and everything that's going on with WMACO. And of course, many years ago, I actually served for eight years on the WMACO board, so I'm very familiar with how the system works. And I was looking forward to serving again, but our councilperson from Chesapeake City wanted to get involved and I think it was time to share some of our responsibilities and, and he got involved and was more active on the WMACO committee and, but I think there's a lot of information you bring to the table, a lot of assets that we need to use from a, from our town perspective with WMACO. And as I stated, you're, you've done a wonderful job and I've known you for many years and I, I like, you know, we, we look at the projects and the amount of money that these things cost and the percentages. And I know the folks out in the audience really didn't see the, the big picture here, but I think it was basically about 90% of the folks, you drive one, drive to work by themselves. And the long-term goal, of course, was to try to get more mass types of ways to get back and forth to work. And, and I'll kind of bring up the train station for the town of Elton because I know that that's one of those items that's in the, in the list. And I know that we're working for that and I, we're on top of it. I think we're on top of it. Anyone else from the board have anything? Any comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Louis, I think you have a proclamation.
Yes, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. A proclamation of the mayor and commissioners, the town of Elton proclaiming October 2014 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas annually, an estimated 232,000 women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer and 40,000 will die from the disease. Whereas breast cancer affects both women and men, although it's the second most frequently diagnosed cancer in American women, thousands of men will also be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer each year. Whereas each October, a nation and the international community partner higher, to higher, heighten awareness of breast cancer and emphasize a lifesaving message of early detection through outreach education and screening programs. And whereas the research and advocacy, significant advances have been made in the fight against breast cancer, including the increase in five-year relative survival rates for localized breast cancer. And therefore, the mayor and commissioners of the town of Elton nearby proclaim the month of October 2014 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Elton and encourage all citizens to support research that one day will lead to the elimination of this insidious disease.
Do we have a motion to approve that proclamation?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Here's your old signature. Okay, Lou, you are on for the town administrators' report.
Okay, the next item I have is a request from James Nicholson of the North Street Hotel and Dennis and Ingrid Benahane of Benahane's Irish Pub. The Elton High School class of 1984 is holding their 30th year reunion on the weekend of the October, this weekend, I guess, in the weekend. And part of this reception of this event is between, or between the two Northeast Hotel and the Benahanes. And they have requested an alcohol beverage restriction waiver by the mayor and commissioners in order for them to have this event outside. It's scheduled for sixth, August, I mean, I'm sorry, October 3rd, 6:00 PM to 11:59 PM. And the board grant says we'll issue a permit and please be aware of it.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve the permit?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Sorry, Mary Jo.
Any discussion in regards to the permit? I'd like to say it's going to be first Friday in Elton. I think that we're going to have several hundred people just coming in for the first Friday event. And then you add on top of the, the alumni class, it's not only the class of 1984, but it's, the, the reception is open to all Elton High School graduates. And I'm not one, but my wife is, so I will be there. But I would say that anyone in the audience that is an Elton High School graduate, I think it would be great to see some of your old classmates and I think it's going to be a wonderful event in downtown. And I'm expecting probably 200 from that alumni class to be there. So I think that we're going to have a very large crowd in downtown Elton on Friday. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else, Lou? Oh, that's it. Okay, I got a little bit of old business. Before we really get into the old business, I, and actually this is old business and I wanted to bring this up. At our last meeting, we were somewhat hit with a grenade. And when you're up here sitting as, whether you're mayor and commissioners or any residents of the town, because that's what we are, and, and you get blindsided by some information. Sometimes we, we really truly don't know how we're supposed to react or how we should react. Saying all that, there's a, we are not the judge and jury up here on anything that's brought to the table. I'm looking over to my left and we have council here and our council is not the prosecutor. I just want to make it very clear that the, the meetings and the form that we have here is to conduct town of Elton business. This is not a forum to rip or criticize individuals or people, just is not. There's a, there's a way that you can go away, go and, and, and make this happen. For example, if there's a criminal behavior that anyone in our audience or who's viewing the videotape feel there's a, a criminal activity going on, then you need to take that to either the higher authorities, be, be it the police department or through the state's attorney's office or go see a judge. It's not the mayor and commissioners. If there's an ethical proceeding that is being questioned from any, anyone on our town board, on any of our boards, and that could be our planning board, our zoning board, our parks and rec board, our historical planning board, or the mayor and commissioners, if there's an ethical issue, it needs to be taken up with the ethics board. The ethics board is an independent of us. They're so independent that if you have, if you want to address it that way, you create a letter, you present it to Michelle here at town hall. Michelle then will call a meeting of the members of the ethics committee. The ethics committee then at that point convenes, they discuss what was brought to the table and then at that point, they can make a, a decision to the person that was making that complaint. The situation that happened last week at the meeting was we did receive some information, but it wasn't, the person that was doing the presentation didn't really want to disclose who the person was that was making the complaint, which I understand. But in an ethic situation or criminal act, there has to be, someone has to stand up and make that accusation, put it in writing and take it to the correct party. We are not the correct party, I hate to say that. But saying that, since the information was given to us last week, we were given some photographs and we were given an email. I want town of Elton to take that package, present it to the ethics board for their review. So Michelle, I'm asking you to take that information, see what the, get the ethics board to convene and see if there is any perception of any wrongdoing and let's let the independent group make a decision who's, who's made to make that decision. It's, it's not us. With that, that's, that's going to be the last that I say of that. It's, it's very tough for us to be, be a part of accusations and it's very difficult because we have no, we have, we're not prosecutors. We don't have the ability to, to find out the information that, that we need to find out. But we do not want to sweep anything under the rug. We want to be above board as we can with any action that we take. And that's the goal that we want to do here. And the fellow that brought the information here last week brought it to us, we reviewed it, we are going to pass it on to the ethics board. So that's enough, I want to say. Mr. Downs, is there anything that, that I missed or I should add to that?
Only that, when he made that presentation, of course, as any speaker does, he identified himself in his, in his address and it would be sent there, as I understand it, under his name, on his behalf, and that the ethics board will respond to him.
And, and when that response comes back, the response goes solely to that individual or person and it's not, help me understand, is it for public display then at that point? I mean, I, I-
I think it depends on the circumstances as to what the recommendations are.
Very good.
So I think you get different answers based on different recommendations.
But we are learning ourselves up here, but that is the process. And I just wanted to make everyone very clear that, you know, we're here to conduct town business and I'm not here to have any, anyone being attacked on a personal level. With that, Lou, I wanted to, on old business, I had, I, I know we discussed about the Artesian flow rates at the last meeting and, and I actually went up to the reservoirs with you when they were performing the flow tests. Can you help us understand what the determination was of that?
The, the test verified and confirmed that Artesian can deliver sufficient water to the reservoir. The design of that whole system was to deliver water to the reservoir because the reservoir holds 1.8 million gallons, our, our most voluminous storage facility. And they could clearly present a flow rate that would adequately provide water to Elton. The issue from our engineer's perspective was that they believe there's bottlenecks, as they describe it, in the lower part of town. So when the treatment plant is shut down, obviously wouldn't have the pressure flow from the treatment plant at the time, then there are some restrictions that limit the amount of water flow rate or pressure that we would expect to have in our normal daily affairs of, of serving our customers. So our engineers have to look into what those bottlenecks will be and we'll have to resolve those so we could operate our, solely on the reservoir supply and not our plant. So I'll upgrade you on that as we find out.
Very good. All right, that was the only old business I had. I, I, so under contract with Artesian, our, their contract was to provide that amount of water to the reservoir.
1.5 million gallons max to the town of Elton per day. And they can do that to our reservoir. It wasn't designed to overcome head loss in our system, to supply our distribution system throughout the town, simply to supply the reservoir highest volume or as I said, voluminous water supply.
Very good. All right. I'm going to start to the right tonight. Commissioner Deacon, any old business, sir?
No, that's what I had to talk about was the 200 gallons. It would be, I'm sorry, the, the pipe fitting was. Ken had brought up about a fitting for somewhere around $1,200. What was the final outcome on that? What was the decision? What was the decision?
The piping?
Was it, it was a fitting for $1,200. Um, it wasn't the altitude, no, it wasn't the altitude, it was the other one, that if we had, uh, the diesel generator would quit, um, it was a diversion. Do you remember, Rob?
Uh, it was, it was, uh, right out, I think it was right at the reservoirs that we're gonna put a valve in, uh, but there was some discussion. But Mark Turble said the other night was that, uh, if they, if they had to install that valve by a wet tap, then it was gonna be, uh, could possibly be $5,000 per-
Or 10, yeah, total 10.
D is box tapping, that's their standard, big, that's all. Uh, that wouldn't be an issue for us if the, if the piping modifications at the Bell Hill, uh, pumping station would overcome the bottlenecks, that's the thing we don't know. We don't know if that'll, that'll do it.
Do we, do we need to-
I don't think it was that. I'll get hold of Ken and ask him to get clarification, then send an email on it.
If we wanna make action on it and move forward with that valve, valve.
Now, the valve he's talking about is not a valve, it's piping modification. The valve he was talking about is the Berman valve at the, uh, Bell Hill Tower.
Okay.
That, that's a whole separate thing, that was a $10,000 valve. We haven't made a resolution on that yet.
Okay. No other old business?
Commissioner Gibbons?
Louis, you were supposed to contact someone at Rambo's house in reference to extension of more, you did that yet, because we never received a response. So that's the long agenda. Okay, thanks. That's it.
I just, uh, wanted to say I attended the competition night with the bands and I enjoyed the night. Uh, really good crowd out there and, uh, good music. And, um, also I wanna commend the, uh, EPD for their service, uh, as far as trying to control the traffic, speed limits, uh, that I've noticed in here and been in several areas. Um, and, um, knew, known to get a phone call, and I called the police department and right on it, so, uh, I know that they can't catch everybody, but they have been doing a good job trying to, uh, uh, slow down some of the speeders.
That's it. Very good. Commissioner Mayor Joe?
Yeah, I was asked to check on the upgrade of lighting that we're doing in all the town buildings, and I just wanted to report that, uh, the Public Works building is complete. Parks and Rec, that I was told they are supposed to start town hall this week, um, but it, hoping they'll be complete by the end of October, is that correct, Louis?
Two, two buildings done in this one.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, two buildings have been done.
Right.
This is the third.
Yeah, so, um, that is gonna save a lot of dollars in the future, so, we're looking forward to that. Can I add my new business being, uh, 'cause it kinda goes with that?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, also, there's a, an article here, um, that I was, someone shared with me, and it's a great article, it's bright lights and big profits. And this is happening in a lot of big cities, but what they're doing is putting the LED lights in, um, in their downtowns. It's not only safe because it brightens the street, I know we did the walkway, uh, this past year, but, um, I actually called around to see if we can get some pricing on the LED lights and if we can get into the state program where we get the 80% back. Um, so I'm waiting to hear back from them, but, uh, the article is fantastic. Um, thank you, Mr. Lemon, for sharing it. Um, you know, we're all about saving tax-paying dollars, and, uh, this would help and also brighten the streets downtown and make people feel safer, so, I have, I'll keep reporting when I hear back.
Very good. Okay, new business, all right. Uh, I actually sent a, uh, email over to Michelle earlier in the, uh, earlier in the week. Uh, we had a, uh, and all of our, uh, I guess I just wanna make it, uh, the best we can that, uh, everyone, uh, pay attention to the pedestrian walkways. Uh, we had a, uh, an incident where we did almost have one of the state workers at the, uh, state district courthouse, uh, was almost struck by a car the other day because they did not stop at the pedestrian walkway. And, uh, I sent that note, uh, to town hall, and I think that, that we're already on it. I think we're gonna try to, uh, maybe brighten up those, throughout the whole town, maybe brighten up, uh, uh, the, the walkways, but also, I think we're gonna put some signage down there also, in the middle of the road, very similar to what I think we're gonna try to do on the high street. But, uh, we try to react as quickly as we can, but, uh, hopefully in the future, we'll be able to know, uh, as we move forward, that we can, uh, move forward with these traffic coming. But I, I wanna thank, uh, everyone for getting right on top of that. I had, uh, a phone call the other evening from, uh, a former town employee, now a real estate agent, Bill Heath, and, uh, Bill had called me and, uh, mentioned to me that, uh, he is, uh, attempting to sell a home to, uh, one of our town employees. And, uh, during this discussion, they've been going back and forth, and he's doing everything that he can to entice that employee to move into downtown Elton. And, uh, do we currently have any incentives, uh, Louis, uh, in regards to having our employees live in the town of Elton? You mean, uh, as, uh, incentives- Incentives being, being, uh, being, maybe a, uh, and I'll just throw out a few things, uh, maybe a, a discount on the water, a discount on the trash, uh, whatever it may be, but is there anything that we do to try to entice, uh, our employees to live in the town of Elton?
We don't provide those incentives. Obviously, if you lived in town, uh, you wouldn't have any distance to drive, you'd save a bundle, I guess.
There you go.
I take it from an expert.
Yes, there you go. But I think that, uh, what I'm asking, uh, the town board to, to think about, is this something that we might wanna move forward with as we move, as we go into the future? Uh, maybe, maybe during the next 20 or 30 years, if we're fortunate, maybe this, we could put something together that could, uh, get maybe part of our workforce to actually live here in town. Just a comment, I wanted to throw that out there, I was asked by, uh, a, a real estate agent to bring that up, and I was happy to do it. Chief, I wanted to, uh, give you a request, uh, and I actually, uh, passed this on to, uh, Lieutenant Zerillo, uh, but I wanted to formally do it. Uh, the Elton VFW is having a, hosting a, a little, I, I, I wanna use the word carnival on, on October 11th, uh, that's Saturday, October 11th, and, and it's a, it's a membership drive for the VFW. There, and I don't think there's rides or anything out there, but what he'd like to do is have some police presence out there and, and maybe offer to the families that come, uh, a, a fingerprinting opportunity for the kids.
Yeah, if we can do that.
Uh, I think it would be great for us to, uh, get involved with the VFW a little bit, and I think the hours are from noon to 5:00. Uh, if someone could contact Commander Charles McCoy, and I do have a cell phone number, which I'll give you, uh, afterwards.
Yeah. The building, that Charlie McCoy's building is really coming on-
It really is.
It really is, and, and if anyone's had an opportunity to take a look at the, uh, it's for the veterans, uh, veterans, I hope, uh, it initially was for the paralyzed veterans and, and, uh, uh, it's gonna be their resale, uh, facility, and it's, uh, literally right there at the, where the VFW posts this. Beautiful facility. It's gonna be very, very nice. And, and lastly, uh, and I've kinda brought this up a couple of different times, but I wanted to formally bring it up. Uh, we're currently doing the, uh, cleaning out the raceway, uh, where our raceway down at Howard's Pond or Cow Pond, our, our raceway, uh, is, is the most crucial part of, uh, getting our water to the plant. And, uh, I think this is only the second time in, I don't know, during your tenure, during your tenure here-
We never, uh, did this extent because it's like roughly 3,300 cubic yards of material coming out of there, and we, we've never taken that much material out of there.
So we're taking a lot of material out there, and, and hopefully this will be great for years and years and years to come. Uh, but the comment that I had from not only, uh, uh, one resident, uh, but I will say it's, it's, I could name six or seven residents that live along the, uh, Big Elk Creek, and I'm one of them, and, uh, I'd like to know if there's any way that we could extend that, uh, permit to allow us to go up and clean the debris out of the Big Elk Creek. And, and a couple of points, uh, that I wanna talk about is, prior to our dam, uh, where, where, uh, former, uh, well, the former, uh, Mayor Wilcox lives, uh, there's a lot of debris in there. You go up a little bit further, uh, where, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Whitaker live, it's, it's a massive, and then if you go all the way up to, uh, where- Where am I, where am I thinking of? Where the old railroad bridge was.
One fifty, yeah, cross, Friendship Bridge.
Where, where, go through Friendship Heights, and you go back to where the old railroad bridge is. I don't even know, uh, how another piece of debris can even get by, 'cause it's massive. Uh, and I know that what's gonna happen is we, it's not interfering with our water supply, and I understand that, and I know that's the challenge that we have, uh, is that if it's not affecting our water supply and we're getting water to our plant, it's a, it's a non-issue. But I believe at some point, uh, it will become an issue, and I, I'd just like to know who I would need to speak with or talk to, uh, to maybe, maybe you can set that meeting up for me and let me, let me ask someone from the Army Corps or from the state to see how we can get that, I'm not using the word dredged, I'm looking at clean, and it, 'cause I'd like to ask the question, then can we get, keep an annual permit that we can knock those trees and debris out ourselves in some way? I don't know how we would do it, uh, but I'd like to figure out how we could. I know years and years ago, I was told it was just done on a Saturday night or a Sunday morning, and no one knew anything about it, but I know we can't do those things today.
Well, they upgraded federal prison systems, so, and I-
Yes, and I'm not going, and I'm not going.
Stick with the permit.
But maybe give me, give me, give me someone I can contact.
Yes.
All right, with that, new business, DeJen?
Uh, a few things. Um, I wanted to, uh, backtrack a little bit to the why, and maybe we get a little ahead of myself here, but he was talking about the sewage and the water, um, so the sewage and water lines, I'd like to know how old they are? Uh, will we inspect them before we actually vote on the annexation? Um, just basically, what are the pros and cons to the town residents, um, particularly the cons? What should we be expecting as far as the legacy maintenance on those pipes? How long have they been in there? Does anybody know how long they've been in there? Um, will we have to replace any valves, anything like that? If we take it on, all of a sudden, what are the hidden costs behind that? Just so that we can go in with, with our eyes wide open.
Uh, we don't know the water line that's, that, uh, supports the, um, YMCA. We only supply water to them from a connection at 545 and 279. That's where our meter is. The water line from that point to the YMCA is not owned by the town of Elton, so we don't maintain it. We just read your meter and charge it. The sewer line does not exist at the current time. They would have to build a force main that runs from the YMCA facility across Route 40 and tie into our two-inch force main that currently serves the state highway administration. Our engineer believes that a two-inch force main will adequately serve both the state highway and the YMCA, and that would be all new, we have to be all new.
All right, when you say they would be the YMCA, we'd have to foot that cost.
Oh, yes, they would be entirely on their property and they'd have to, Warren Jack, or actually directional drill under Route 40 to tie into our system across the street. Actually, it's a lot less expensive than the alternative to go all the way down to, uh, 545 and 279 as initially they were going to do. So it's, uh, mostly a directional, like, drill, but they have to have constant, I think.
Um, with the holidays coming up, Halloween, uh, Thanksgiving, Christmas and New Year, uh, something, when, Rob or Mayor, when you were talking about, uh, employees moving into town and incentivizing them, um, I think that, that the board, we've talked around it a lot, and I, I've been coming to these meetings for a while, and everybody talks around the big problems, um, but I would like to, to come up with more of a, a comprehensive plan to make it more appealing for, for everyone to move into town, not just, uh, employees. Um, and, and what I'm talking about is, is, again, business development for all of town, where we're creating, uh, jobs and sustaining jobs, uh, where we're reaching out to, to bigger and, and better employers and asking them to come. The drug plan and the homeless plan, I, I, I hear a lot that we have these things in place, but a lot of times we're, we're reluctant or, um, not reluctant, it's not the right word, uh, we're, um, begrudgingly enforcing them because we're afraid of certain things, ACLU, the, those type of things. Um, and, and we have these plans in place, but obviously they're not working. Uh, we have to come up with, with something different, and I'd really like to come into the, the next budget, talking about the next budget, with a lot of things on the table, instead of waiting until, uh, all of a sudden after the new year or, or all of a sudden it's, it's March, and we only have a short amount of time. It doesn't make sense to me. If we could please put something on, on a workshop-
Yep.
-in the near future to actually start talking about these things, I, I'd appreciate The ethics board, I had brought up a little while ago, and, and, um, uh, a couple of us have, have talked, uh, about putting, uh, instead of the ethics board being an appointment to actually being a, a, a voting thing, and I don't have no clue or any clue if, if, uh, any other town does that, uh, if they vote on the ethics board, the members of the ethics board, but we, we constantly see a, a low turnout for votes, um, and if that's something that you could put on for, for voting, uh, that particular time would draw more people in, get more people involved in the town, and, and that's all I'm looking for, and if we can put that on, on something, or if, if it's, uh, against the law somewhere, let me know that too.
Well, uh, we could kinda answer that, hopefully, real quickly. Can you have Chaney Cole start calling, uh, the other municipalities or contact the Maryland Municipal League and see if any of the other 157 municipalities in the state do anything, uh, from a voting standpoint on the ethics committee? And, and John, I know, I see you there typing, I know that you're on it yourself. Give us some type of label.
All right, and, uh, lastly, um, I wanna bring up central purchasing again. Um, it, it just, it doesn't make sense to me that, that we don't have a central purchasing department, um, for, it's a duplication of man hours a lot of times, whether it's, it's toilet paper or pens or whatever the case may be, uh, and man hours is money. On top of that, the questions of, you know, why are we using this company instead of this company? Uh, central purchasing would be able to tell us that they put it out for a bid and, and this is what they're, they're using, um, and, and this way it's, it's not this, this thing where everybody's looking at everybody. Um, I, I think that we have some great people in town, um, very, very smart people in town, that would be able to handle that and handle, handle it easily. So I think we need to take, start taking a look at that even closer. And I, in the long term, it's gonna save the town money.
I think, I think I would agree with you.
And that's the last thing I have for tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Gibbons?
As far as the railroad, um, Truss was up there, and Little Earl has been up there to see that, uh, myself, and Louis has been there too, and, uh, there's a lot of trees and buildings and, you know, it'd be nice if somebody would give us the green light to go ahead and be able to do something up there. Uh, Mayor Joe, you haven't been there, nor has DeJen, certainly, uh, one of us would be glad to go up there with you so you can see that. Uh, the, uh, concept of, uh, incentive and getting people to move back in town sounds very good. And Louis, uh, I know on one of the boards I served, we've been trying to get you to move here, but I guess I was so good you decided to stay, but, you know, it, it does have some merits in trying to get someone to move into the town of Elton, so, you know, if we can come up with some ways or some thoughts to get there, I think that would be very good. Rob, when we discuss the meters again, maybe we need to have a walking workshop, at which time we can walk through the various areas downtown so we can actually see, uh, before we go into the decision-making process? Is that be okay?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do a walking tour, and I think, uh, that's a good question. Has there been, Chief, has there been any issues with the, uh, meters or parking at this point?
And it's Mr. Lemons here. Yes, sir, uh, I was up at Elton High School, uh, the principal said that, uh, in May of 2015, they're gonna incorporate or infuse some of what we do in the town of Elton into their curriculum. First of all, he had to get permission from Mr. Zimmer, who's the director of, of the history program in Cecil County, and one of the local teachers, who is the chairperson at Elton High School, Mr. Herr, to make sure that can be done, so, uh, that will be done, uh, come May, so that's very good. And they also talked about maybe some incentive that, uh, they can partnership with us and have some of the kids to come to the meeting, so I wanna let you know that as well. That's it.
Thank you, Charlie. Commissioner Polian?
Well, I just have one thing of, piggybacking on, one of the things Mr. Ron, uh, mentioned last, um, meeting, is, is around the-
last meeting, it's around the same idea. When he mentioned something about landlords and recognizing certain people, that was something that triggered me for the town of Elton employees. I just thought it may be nice if we started doing something for the employees that are actually working hard and diligently trying to do their job at the best of their abilities. And I was thinking that each department here, maybe once a month we put in a name and at the end of that month we draw a name from all those names that have been put in for employees of the month suggested and just draw a name out and maybe-
Have dinner with me?
Some kind of incentive, maybe a dinner for the person and their spouse or the boyfriend, girlfriend, whatever it is, a dinner for two of them. Just some kind of incentive to make them know that they're appreciative, appreciated in the town of Elton for their duties. So each department here, maybe see, this person's really been doing a top job this month and I'd like to put their name in there. And the fairness part of it is, you just go in there and pull a name out. That way each department be represented and each one has a chance to get their name pulled out. Just a thought.
I like it. Thank you.
That's it. Commissioner, Mary Jo had one more thing. We did do the proclamation for breast cancer awareness month. We are painting the town pink. I mentioned it last meeting, but it is time. So everybody, we're halfway done. We had to order some more gel covers, but please join us. It looks beautiful. Take a ride. I was going by about quarter to six this morning. Looks gorgeous. And everybody, if you can do your business or you need some help with something, please let us know.
Thank you.
So Mary Jo, when you're going to paint the town purple? Who am I getting that from?
That's actually was in the spring. That's when it's cancer awareness month.
Well, let's hope we're painting the town orange the first week of November for the Orioles. How's that sound? Anything else? Okay, now is the- Saturday. Yeah, I did want to mention, just a reminder to the town employees, we are hosting a picnic for the town employees on Saturday at Meadow Park. I would say that with the rain, it's on its way, we may have to change things a little bit, maybe have it upstairs. So I just wanted to kind of get that out too. So we are giving a thank you to our employees. And I think it's the first time we've had a town picnic in 10, 12 years. Okay, this is the time of the meeting that we invite our public, our town residents, our business folks to speak in regards to the business at hand for the town and hopefully keep in mind what I had stated previously. Mr. Ron Walter, please come on down. Ron lives at 242 Douglas Street, but please, please let everyone know yourself.
I certainly do. Ron Walter, 242 Douglas Street, here in Elton. I just want to, I want to attest to the fact that this town, the people in this town that represent us in regards to residents, they truly care about us. And I had the opportunity to take the five mile walk at the festival and I was determined I was going to do it against, kind of foolishly, I guess, if you want to say that, but I was optimistic I could make it. When I got there, I was there at proper time and so forth. And Mary Jo was there sitting in a golf cart. And she said, you know, come over here. And I went over and I sat down next to her. And I had no idea. I thought she wanted to talk about something because we were talking a few days before about some things, you know. And she said, she said-